Fred, quieres decir una oración antes de empezar esto?
Sí, señor. Padre, le doy la gracias por esta gran nación y este gran estado que damos. Le rogamos, como siempre, Padre Dios, que te bendiga nuestra ciudad, que te bendiga nuestro consejo con sabiduría, que te bendiga nuestro estado, Padre Dios, para que nos salve de esta pandemia. Le rogamos, Padre Dios, que podamos tener una buena, en las próximas semanas, un buen paro, un buen desfile de fuego. Le rogamos, Padre Dios, por la seguridad de todos nuestros ciudadanos, y le damos las gracias, Padre Dios, por esta noche. Le damos las gracias por el privilegio que tenemos, Padre Dios, de tomar decisiones para nuestra ciudad. Gracias, Padre.
Amén.
¿Quién llama esta orden de seis de uno p. m.? Llame.
Mayor Hicks.
Presidente.
Consejero Redarte.
Presidente.
Consejero García.
Presidente.
Consejero Pediga.
Presidente.
Consejero Lucero.
¿Puedes estar aquí y acompañarme en el pleno? En el pleno, agradecemos el flagelamiento de Estados Unidos de América y el republico por el que se llama: Una nación, bajo Dios, independiente, justa y soberana.
Lo siento, espérate un segundo, parece que Dios tiene alguna razón.
Vamos ahora.
Lo sé. Está bien, estamos de vuelta.
¿Aprobación de la agenda?
Hago una motion que aprobemos la agenda como es.
Segunda.
Yo segunda.
Consejero Redarte.
Sí.
Consejero García.
Sí.
Consejero Padiya.
Sí.
Consejero Lucero. Ciudadanos, para dirigir al consejo.
Está bien, tengo una carta de Joan Klonowski. Ella preguntó si sabíamos cuándo los carretes de reciclaje volverán al área de Smiths. Ella sigue llamando al manejo de residuos o a la autoridad de residuos solares, que estoy sentado en el board, chicos, eso no está sucediendo en el futuro previsible. Solo quería saber cuándo.
Sí, decirle que no va a suceder en el futuro previsible. Estamos trabajando en ello. Veremos qué pasa con el tema del COVID, no hay manera de sanitarizarlo y cuidarlo. Hasta que el COVID encuentre algo más para hacer, tendrás que encontrar algo más para hacer con tus reciclos. Aunque los están tomando, están tomando cartulina, en la autoridad de residuos solares.
Creo que Diamond G podría estar tomando cartulina.
Sí, Diamond G también tomaría tu cartulina, pero en cuanto a plásticos y todo ese otro, es un problema muerto por ahora.
También recibí una carta de la señora Mavor. Dice que durante una de las recortes recientes de la copia con los administradores, ella escuchó como el gerente de la ciudad y la persona que estaba sentada junto a ella dijo que los streams live de las reuniones de consejo de la ciudad estaban siendo realizadas bien. Que el asunto de la audiencia podría ser cuidado solo por obtener un conjunto de teléfonos. Que es mejor verlo en un teléfono o un tableta y no en un computador. Todo esto es absolutamente inaceptable. Primero, el hecho de que las únicas personas que podemos escuchar correctamente están en la parte trasera de la habitación y que incluso si usamos teléfonos. Después, no importa lo que uses para ver la reunión de consejo, todavía no puedo ver a todos claro, a menos que estén justo junto a la persona que está filmando en la parte trasera de la habitación. El propósito completo es que los ciudadanos puedan ser parte de la reunión de consejo de la ciudad durante este tiempo difícil. ¿Por qué hacernos imposible que estemos allí? Y luego, encima de eso, próspero por hacerlo posible. termino luchando por la reunión de consejo solo para ver el sitio de YouTube de Seven Cities varios días después, para poder reverir la reunión de consejo y entender todo lo que realmente pasó. Since Seven Cities tiene una calidad de grabación mucho mejor de la reunión. Dice, por favor, no ignore los ciudadanos cuando dicen que este stream live es un problema. No hay teléfonos, no funcionará para escuchar. Y dice, Mayor Hicks, aprecio poder ver las reuniones, ya que no puedo atender físicamente. Y luego dice, señora Harmio, muy agradecida y alegre de que tengas tu posición de vuelta. Esa es la señora Mavor.
Estamos trabajando en el feed live. Compramos un cordón que va a los aparatos de los que estamos alimentando y creo que eso ha ayudado con el sonido, vamos a testearlo. Pero hemos pedido una cámara y similar a la forma que tiene la Tru and the Life en su iglesia, así que creo que eso ayudará con la vista. Y no sé qué otras partes de control son, pero puedes acercarte a quien esté hablando, así que esperamos que eso ayude y deberían estar en cualquier momento.
Deberíamos tenerlo encendido hasta el lunes.
Hoy veo que estamos haciendo estas reuniones live para siempre, ahora que hemos empezado.
Me gustaría verlas hechas de alta calidad.
Sí, y estamos trabajando en eso. Quiero decir, tenemos que sacar los gusanos de ello como cualquier otra cosa. Cuando primero empiezas algo nuevo, tienes que trabajar el jefe, chicos, es así como funciona. ¿Alguien más quiere decir algo antes de avanzar? Vamos a la micela, identifícame y hazlo.
Buenas noches, soy Carolyn Newton. Dame un segundo, escribí algo para leer, no soy muy buena en la publicación, así que...
Está bien.
Lo escribo para que no haga una gran mala idea de mí.
Es lo que todo esto es aquí.
Está bien, estoy aquí sobre el paro. Tengo muchos clientes ancianos que vienen a mi tienda y están devastados de que no estemos teniendo un paro normal este año. En unos pocos meses cortos, el COVID-19 ha cambiado nuestra sociedad. Ahora vivimos en un mundo donde la enfermedad se oculta alrededor de cada esquina y para algunos, la muerte no está lejos. Practicamos el cuarentena autonómico, la isla social, resultando dificultades financieras importantes para todos nosotros. El efecto va mucho más allá de las cuentas bancarias al amenazar con la existencia de ciertos negocios y eso es solo el panorama financiero. El lado personal es igualmente suave. Cuando roles y relaciones, ingresos y ritmos diarios son reasignados, se escoge una forma de la propia valía personal. Imagínate lo que sucede cuando personas como esta comienzan a experimentar este sentimiento de pérdida. Y ahora que estamos aquí hoy, y es por eso que estamos aquí hoy, para pedir al consejo reconsiderar tener un paro normal. Seville County ha hosted el paro más antiguo y continuo del 4 de julio en Nuevo México. El 4 de julio es la celebración estadounidense de la independencia de un gobierno opresor. Necesitamos estar fuertes y juntos en estos tiempos difíciles. Y esto no es lo que veo sucediendo. Veo a la gente cambiando sus vecinos para tener barbecue. Veo a la gente en la comunidad cambiando sus negocios porque piensan que no son esenciales y todo lo que queremos hacer es alimentar a nuestras familias. Lo siento, perdí mi lugar. Veo el odio que se está produciendo. La gente quiere usar máscaras y no quiere usarlas. La gente no está comunicando. Necesitamos volver las cosas a lo más normal posible. Veo al gobierno tratando de tomar control de todo, incluso nuestros derechos constitucionales. ¿Es esto lo que el consejo va a hacer también, tomando cuidado con el paro?
Lo vamos a averiguar esta noche.
Eso es todo lo que tengo que decir.
Porque todo el mundo tomó una oración para cumplir con la Constitución, no para cumplir una orden constitucional. Y es por eso que puse el rodeo en el paro esta noche, para que ellos puedan ser o sea etiquetados como constitucionistas que están a favor del país o enemigos, enemigos domésticos de la Constitución, punto.
Necesitamos unirnos como grupo.
Estoy de acuerdo.
Todo el mundo está siendo arrancado en todas las direcciones.
Cuando tomas una oración a Dios en frente del público entero de tu ciudad, eso es algo muy serio, ¿de acuerdo? Porque si no cumples tu oración, entonces no eres nada más que un tonto.
Exacto.
Punto.
Gracias.
Y eso es lo que tenemos en el estado ahora mismo, desde la Corte Suprema hasta el gobernador hasta el secretario de Estado hasta Hector Valdériz, todo el listado, chicos, solo para que sepan. Está bien, ¿alguien más quiere hablar? Ustedes van a esperar hasta que salgan los temas. Esperar hasta que salga el tema, Les, Diane, ¿cómo te va? ¿Vas a decir algo ahora o vas a esperar hasta que salgan los temas? Está bien. Comentario público y discusión sobre el charter, ¿alguien más quiere discutir el charter? ¿Alguien aquí quiere discutir el charter? ¿Rick, quieres discutir el charter?
No, estoy bien.
Estamos en cumplimiento con el charter. Reuniones de consejo de la ciudad regular.
Hago una motion que aprobemos la reunión de consejo regular de la ciudad desde cinco de ocho de dos mil veinte.
Segunda. Consejero Redarte.
Sí.
Consejero García.
Sí.
Consejero Padiya.
Sí.
Consejero Lucero. Estamos en la sesión cerrada ahora. Las demandas de litigio no tomarán mucho tiempo. Este es Cameron, no quiero verlo. No quiero ver tu cara preciosa, amigo. ¿Puedes ver mi cara preciosa es la pregunta?
Bueno, ¿dónde está?
Está por aquí, amigo. Está por aquí, amigo. Voy a hacer una motion para volver a entrar.
Hago una motion para volver a entrar en la sesión regular.
Segunda.
Segunda.
Consejero Redarte.
Sí.
Consejero García.
Sí.
Consejero Padiya.
Sí.
Consejero Lucero.
Sí.
No hubo decisión there. Está bien, Jacob's Contract, amendment número tres.
Che. Buenas noches, consejero, señora gerente, mayor. Ante ti está un amendment de contrato número tres. Así que la ciudad, especialmente el trabajo público, ha reducido el 30% en todas las expenditures así como muchas posiciones en todo el board. Ha habido una reducción de tres en el departamento de las calles, dos en el mantenimiento, dos en el departamento de las tuberías y todo el presupuesto de pavimentación para el año próximo. Y así, este impacto también afectará al contrato con Jacob's. Y así, si nos fijamos en este acuerdo, es la página número diez. Verás que el artículo 5.1 trata de las finanzas de ello. La compensación de servicios para el nuevo acuerdo es uno millón cien mil novecientos y trece dólares. Con la reducción de los impuestos, viene una reducción de alcance. La reducción de alcance incluye dos porciones del contrato. Una es la reducción de la tubería sanitaria, así como las estaciones de elevación, y la segunda es el departamento de los parques.
Preguntas.
¿Está la ciudad lista para tomar esta orden?
Sí, el departamento de las tuberías ha sido entrenado para el factor y ayudará en la irrigación de los sistemas de sprinklers. El departamento de las calles tiene algún tiempo libre en sus manos sin presupuesto de pavimentación y así tomarán funciones con el Riverwalk. Y luego el departamento de mantenimiento tomará el tramo y anticipamos tomar dos y medio posiciones para el resto de los parques.
Ahora, Edgar, ¿has pensado en esto? ¿Jacobs quiere liberar esta porción del acuerdo con nosotros?
Tenemos un par de empleados de Jacob's.
¿Me escuchas?
Sí.
Buenas noches, mayor, consejero, gerente. ¿Cuál fue la pregunta? Lo siento, no podía escuchar muy bien allí.
Bueno, supongo que la propuesta es que una porción de tu acuerdo va a cambiar, ¿correcto?
Correcto.
Y la ciudad va a tomar esa porción de la orden.
Correcto.
¿Ustedes, veamos cómo puedo responder mi pregunta ahora? ¿Quieren renunciar a esa porción de tu acuerdo? ¿Es eso lo que se trata?
Somos los que lo están impulsando.
Así que, consejero Redarte, estamos reduciendo nuestros presupuestos del 30% en todo el board en anticipación de que nuestro ingreso va a ser menor este año próximo. Así que reducimos todos los contratos externos también. Bueno, la Cámara no tenía dinero fuera de los alojes, pero la calle principal, desarrollo económico, todos los contratos TLC que tenemos, reducimos el 30%. Así que el 30% de Jacob's contract era aproximadamente 544.000.
¿Y cómo va a afectar a ustedes?
Bueno, definitivamente queremos ser un socio con la ciudad y así estamos en discusión y queremos ayudar. Y así, con esta reducción de alcance y impuestos, cumplimos con los objetivos de lo que discutimos con el gerente de la ciudad y Mark Tejama. Y estamos dispuestos a ayudar y apoyar donde podemos hacerlo.
¿Y cómo va a afectar a Jacob's?
Todavía seguirán nuestras operaciones normales de la instalación de la central de la contaminación de agua y las actividades de distribución de agua.
¿Estás mirando a dejar de emplear a la gente?
Desafortunadamente, como resultado de la reducción de alcance del departamento de los parques, el personal para esa función de ese departamento se disolverá. Y así, el personal será dejado.
¿Cuántos afecta eso?
Creo que son cinco.
¿Cinco? Está bien. ¿Otra pregunta de ustedes?
Quería todo el contrato, Fred, ¿de acuerdo? Debido a las cosas que hemos hecho. Teníamos órdenes de incendios que no se habían hecho en cuatrocientos ochenta y cinco días, ¿de acuerdo? Todo esto es un resultado de esto. Cuando trajimos a estos tipos, cuando trajeron a este tipo aquí a nosotros, trajeron a él aquí para salvar este contrato. Es lo que trajeron aquí. Y es increíble que las cosas que tardaron en hacer en cuatrocientos ochenta y cinco días, completaron todo el orden, Fred, en menos de treinta días, todo. Pero no pudieron hacerlo en cuatrocientos ochenta y cinco días hasta que decidimos que íbamos a cambiar su contrato. Es lo que se trata, Fred.
Bueno, David Song, dijo a mí, uno de los miembros, que estaba tratando de empujar los parques a nosotros. Dijo, quiero deshacerme de eso, tienes demasiados problemas para nosotros. Dijo en la última reunión cuando tuvimos este disputa de contrato. Así que ahora me llegó. Él me dijo, estábamos tratando de empujar los parques a ustedes, dijo.
No sentía que era justo para nuestros departamentos que reducimos su presupuesto del 30% y no nuestros contratistas externos, así que estábamos tratando de estar en todo el board. En la reunión con Jacob's, parece que de entre esos cinco, posiblemente dos a tres de ellos han retirado de otras organizaciones y pueden encontrar otros trabajos similares que suplen su retirada. Y uno puede ofrecer un transferente a Rio Rancho, es lo que nos dijeron. Así que sí, definitivamente no queremos ver a la gente dejada de empleo, pero no es realmente justo para mi departamento que estoy reduciendo su presupuesto del 30% y estoy financiando entidades externas con toda la cantidad, fue mi perspectiva.
Así que el impacto va a ser muy mínimo, ¿correcto?
Lo será, será mínimo en comparación con el total de la masa de los departamentos.
Está bien, eso responde mi pregunta.
¿Alguien más? Consejero, gracias. Vaya. La mayoría de todo el equipo, todo es nuestro, ¿cierto?
Eso es correcto.
Está bien, excepto por sus camiones, ¿cierto? Tenemos suficientes camiones para hacerlo.
¿Vais a ir al cementerio, al cementerio y cosas así?
Sí, mi propuesta es contratar a un operador de tiempo completo que sabe cómo operar la tubería trasera así como el camión de basura y estar en el sitio durante todo el año.
Eso es lo que queríamos en primer lugar, alguien allí.
¿Rick, tienes algo?
Entonces entiendo que este amendment básicamente está reduciendo el 30%.
Sí. Sí.
Estamos trabajando con K-Pod, básicamente el 30% con nuestro propio equipo.
Eso es correcto.
Está bien. Entiendo que podemos conseguir que los otros tipos y la gente de nuestro gerente de la ciudad lo manejen, ¿correcto?
Sí, consejero, todo excepto dos y medio posiciones.
Está bien, eso es algo que vamos a tener en cuenta.
Sí, señor.
En nuestro contratación. Está bien. Está bien, solo quería obtener una buena comprensión de eso, gracias.
¿Algo más? ¿Incluyes al departamento de la policía en la reducción del 30%?
Sí.
No soy bueno con eso. Te diré eso ahora mismo, chicos, la razón es...
¿Cuánto afectará? Yo tampoco estoy de acuerdo con eso.
No hay manera, no deberíamos reducir el departamento de la policía, especialmente en este día y momento con lo que tenemos pasando en todo este país. Tenemos a la gente llamándonos, diciéndos que van a venir y romper nuestros desastres satellíticos, ¿de acuerdo? Lo último que necesitamos hacer es reducir el departamento de la policía o el departamento de la policía, en caso de que importe, del 30%. Porque el departamento de la policía proporciona servicios de vida salvadora para nuestra comunidad. Así que entiendo reducir todo lo demás, pero no estoy por reducir el departamento de la policía, punto.
No podemos permitir que la policía se abandone.
No va a afectar a su personal, serán más suministros, cosas que pueden esperar, posiblemente un año.
Si eso es ustedes, ustedes van a tomar la decisión, pero te digo ahora, podría ser que yo revocara ese 30%. De acuerdo, porque estoy en contra de reducir el departamento de la policía de ninguna forma, forma o forma de lo que tenemos pasando en este país ahora mismo, la policía y la policía. Estoy de acuerdo con Fred, porque lo que tenemos pasando ahora mismo, y como dije, he recibido llamadas, Eric, tú has recibido llamadas, pero he tenido llamadas diciendo, vamos a traer como Antifa hizo en Albuquerque, van a venir aquí y romper nuestros desastres satellíticos. Van a desestabilizarlos, lo que sea. Esto es lo que están diciendo, y son todos los hispanos y todos están enfadados con Oñate, con Coronado, con todo esto. ¿Qué sigue? ¿Van a salir aquí y arrojar el moro? Piensa en eso. Así que no, estoy en contra de reducir el departamento de la policía de ninguna forma.
Gentlemen, muchas gracias.
En ese punto, no, no lo estamos haciendo, pero estoy haciendo eso claro cuando salga el presupuesto, chicos, porque eso estará en la próxima reunión, así que preparese para eso. ¿Cuál es el placer del consejo?
Bueno, hago una motion que aceptemos este amendment de Jacob's contract, número tres.
Segunda.
Segunda.
Consejero Redarte.
Sí.
Consejero García.
Sí.
Consejero Padiya.
Sí.
Consejero Lucero.
Sí.
Gracias, mayor. El siguiente es mío, la Constitución de Estados Unidos. Tengo a ustedes todos en el bolsillo la Constitución, Eric, te aseguro que nunca has leído, porque no te enseñan en la escuela más. Rick, voy a poner tu en la caja.
Sí.
Está bien. Devuélvalo, devuélvalo. Bueno, no te enseñan en la escuela más. No importa, soy un adulto. ¿Lo has leído? Sí, lo he leído. Está bien, bien, estoy contento de escuchar eso, ¿de acuerdo? Porque ahora mismo el gobernador está usando el décimo artículo, ¿de acuerdo? Para hacer lo que está haciendo a nosotros. Y el décimo artículo dice: "El poder no es delegado a Estados Unidos por la Constitución o prohibido a los Estados, se reserva a los Estados respectivamente o al pueblo". El proyecto de derechos está en la Constitución, ella no puede simplemente dejarlo, chicos, y eso es lo que ha hecho. Está bien, el siguiente sobre esta orden, ¿de acuerdo? Cuando firme mi solicitud, mi respuesta a la orden de Man Damos, esto es lo que encontré, la orden de la Corte Suprema de Nuevo México fue fundada en una emergencia de salud pública, ¿de acuerdo? Y en las ordenes de salud de emergencia, dice que los estatutos de Nuevo México anotados 12-10A-2, parágrafo A, dice que todas las ordenes de emergencia deben ser llevadas a cabo de una manera que proteja los derechos y libertades de los individuos. Esto nunca ha pasado, chicos, aunque esté anotado en el estado de Nuevo México. Solo tomó su oración y la tiró al basura junto con la Corte Suprema y Hector Valdériz. Está bien, el parágrafo siguiente después de eso, en esta orden de emergencia de salud, dice: "Todos los poderes de gestión de emergencias peligrosas del gobernador son para proporcionar los recursos y servicios necesarios para evitar o minimizar daño económico y físico hasta que la situación esté estabilizada". Ella no hizo nada, ella no hizo ninguna de esas cosas. Todo lo que hizo fue declarar una guerra económica contra nosotros, ¿de acuerdo? Y aquí es lo que realmente se trata. Hay ocho niveles de control, ¿de acuerdo? Y esto es lo que los demócratas están poniendo en nosotros, y esto también es el directo, ocho citas, del comunismo. ¿Cómo llegas allí? ¿Cómo controlas a la gente para llegar allí? El primero es el cuidado de la salud, controla la salud y tú controlas a la gente. El segundo es la pobreza, y eso es exactamente lo que esta señora ha hecho. Aumenta el nivel de pobreza tan alto como sea posible. Las personas pobres son más fáciles de controlar y no luchar si estás proporcionando todo para ellos. Número tres, deuda, aumenta la deuda a un nivel insostenible. De esa manera podrás aumentar los impuestos y esto producirá más pobreza. Piensa en esto, chicos. Número cuatro, control de las armas, elimina la capacidad de la gente de defenderse del gobierno. De esa manera podrás crear un estado de policía. Esto es lo que tenemos pasando aquí en nuestro estado ahora mismo, la garantía de bienestar. Controla todos los aspectos de sus vidas, comida, vivienda, ingreso, todo, porque eso los hará dependientes completamente del gobierno. Número seis, educación, controla lo que la gente lee y escucha y controla lo que tus hijos aprenden en las escuelas. Eso es lo que han hecho, religión. ¿Qué pasó en el Easter, chicos? Nos cerraron, no puedes ir a la iglesia. Elimina la creencia en Dios del gobierno y en las escuelas, porque la gente necesita solo creer que el gobierno sabe lo que es mejor para la gente. Número ocho, guerra de clases, y con lo que están haciendo ahora, incluso puedes poner guerra racial allí. Dividen a la gente en los ricos y los pobres, elimina la clase media. Esto causará más descontento y será más fácil pagar los ricos con el apoyo de los pobres. Quiero decir, si eso no suena como lo que ella ha hecho a nosotros, chicos, ella ha creado una guerra económica contra sus ciudadanos. Y la ETA es lo que lo hizo. Ella está forzando a mucha gente a la pobreza porque han cerrado sus negocios mientras ella está eligiendo ganadores y perdedores. Y la Constitución dice que no puede hacer eso, pero sí sigue haciéndolo. Y nosotros como gente le damos por hecho, porque si no lo hiciera, ella no lo haría. Así que en ese punto, todos nosotros hemos tomado una oración para cumplir con las constituciones de Nuevo México y Estados Unidos de América. Creo que es hora de que nuestro gerente de la ciudad tome la misma oración, porque ella oversee al jefe de la policía, el departamento de la policía, que ambos toman oraciones, y ella puede circumventar sus oraciones porque es su jefe, igual que el gobernador hace a la policía estatal ahora haciendo que hagan órdenes que son en contra de la Constitución. Así que ahí es donde estoy, quiero verlo en la política, ¿de acuerdo? El siguiente que he recibido aquí es la política de las armas. He pedido por la llamada de las armas, oh, no, es rodeo. Está bien, así que aquí es lo que quiero hacer ahora. Quiero divertir una motion para permitir que el rodeo suceda.
El rodeo está sucediendo.
El rodeo está sucediendo, pero quiero que el consejo lo apoye, que salga y apoye el rodeo. Y tienen derecho a la asamblea, han estado asambleando durante ciento undentáctimos años con este rodeo. Quiero que el consejo apoye su derecho constitucional a la asamblea, punto. Y quiero lo mismo para el paro. Han estado asambleando durante ciento undentáctimos años, cada año, y ahora este consejo quiere negarles ese derecho.
La asociación rodeo está en cargo del rodeo y están procediendo...
Pero están usando nuestra instalación. Están usando nuestra instalación, es nuestra instalación. Si vienen los policías, vamos a conseguir el ticket, y eso fue el gran asunto con el campo de golf. Así que como dije, si vamos a hacer esto, vamos a hacerlo con el apoyo del consejo o va a ser una protesta. Uno de los dos, es la única manera de que pueda pasar, chicos. Están usando nuestra instalación, no es su instalación más.
Pero tenemos un acuerdo para que ellos la manejen.
Como dije, necesitamos aprobarlo, porque si vienen a romperlo, ¿quién va a conseguir el ticket? Él está sentado aquí. No lo van a dar a Dominic Valerius, lo van a dar al mayor, porque es nuestra instalación, igual que fue el campo de golf, chicos. Así que voy a hacer una motion, y si no obtengo una motion, entonces eso significa que ustedes están violando su oración y prefieren no ver el derecho de la gente a la asamblea, lo que hace que seas un enemigo doméstico de la Constitución y de la gente, punto.
Bueno, me gustaría ver, primero de todo, antes de divertir una motion, es para hacer una discusión.
¿Cómo va, Fred?
He recibido...
He recibido una declaración. ¿Esa cita o advertencia, no fue hecha a Tim, en el campo de golf?
Sí, fue.
Y no fue una cita, fue una advertencia, pero todavía viene directamente a mí, Rick. No, Kim no es la que estará en la corte por eso, yo soy.
Su nombre estaba en esa advertencia.
Kim's name was on that.
¿Tim llegó a la Corte Suprema ya, Rick? ¿Quién hizo eso?
No, solo estoy diciendo que su nombre estaba en ella.
Sí, pero eso... Eso no importa, porque me llegó y es por eso que soy la que está en la Corte Suprema, punto.
Solo estoy diciendo que su nombre estaba en esa advertencia y la tuya no estaba, eso es todo lo que estoy diciendo.
Está bien, y así, ¿obtuvo una orden de Man Damos para ir a la Corte Suprema?
No, Tim, Tim no pudo.
¿Ella obtuvo la orden de Man Damos, Rick? ¿Ella tuvo que responder a la Corte Suprema?
Ella obtuvo la advertencia y su nombre estaba en ella.
¿Ella tuvo que responder a la orden de Man Damos, Rick? No, yo lo hice. Así que mi pregunta es, Rick, ¿apoyas el derecho de la gente a reunirse? ¿Apoyas el derecho de la gente a la asamblea? ¿Apoyas el derecho de la primera enmienda?
También apoyo el derecho de proteger a la gente.
Está bien, y la gente tiene la libertad de elección, ¿cierto, Rick?
Eso es correcto.
Tienen la libertad de ir a un restaurante o no. They have the freedom to go to a restaurant or not, they're open now. They have the freedom of choice to go to the rodeo or not. They're open now, they have the freedom of choice to come to a parade or not. That doesn't matter, Rick. We're moving on to the First Amendment. Do you support it? Are you gonna support the people's right to assemble? It's really quite simple, guys.
Well, I'd like to make a comment if I may.
How about it?
I have received in the past couple of weeks numerous calls. Apparently, I found out that my name and my phone number has been circulated around the city. And which I don't mind if people call me concerning anything that concerns them with the city. People are, I've received 100% support for the parade. I haven't received no negatives at all. Nobody has called me and said that we should not hold a parade. I am very much in favor of listening to the citizens that have called me and shown great support, and so my personal position is, I support the parade and I have no, no, no question about it, no problem with it.
Thank you, Fred, for supporting the First Amendment.
I just want people to know that I've had some bother with calls regarding the parade also. I had no negative calls not to have it. So I'm gonna say, well, with Fred, that again, I had a few bother with calls to have our parade. From the people out there in the town and the community.
Anything else?
So the, so the rodeo grounds, you said that they're wanting to have something?
The rodeo association has a rodeo planned, it's been advertised. They are following the health orders of social distancing. They are requesting that people wear masks. They are planning to have the participants isolate in their trailers until they compete and the spectators will be spread out among the bleachers. I know last year I went to the rodeo and I probably saw only 20 people in the bleachers, and that was on a normal year. So I feel like they can do that, they've spoken with the state police and the state police has given them additional guidance and know that they're hosting a rodeo. So they're trying to adhere to all of the social distancing requirements for outdoor events such as our golf course, which is now open.
Such as parade.
So...
You need to support the people, guys.
Hold on, hold on, this is, this is talking about supporting the people, okay? So this is hard, right, everyone, that Facebook, whoever's out here in the audience who's listening. So we're living through this pandemic, right, that's going on here, and it's, unfortunately, it's not very fun. You know, my views on it is, I understand that there's something out there and it is causing some deaths, some illnesses and whatnot. But I look at it another way too, is, you know, you never hear about any other deaths or you never hear about these other deaths that they might be incurred in because people can't get to the hospital now. So this is, makes emotions between everybody here in our city. When I was voted in, I was voted in by Republicans and I was voted in by Democrats. So I serve the people here. There's a fine balance on where you try to figure out what side to lean on. You know what? I'm a Republican, as everyone knows, and I have my beliefs. But I represent both sides and I see the Democrats' beliefs. And the hard part about when we get voted in here is how do you represent everybody equally? And that's one thing that's very hard to do. So at the one time where you try to do, is try to meet in the middle. We all try to do that, you know, we want to create some unity here. Where I'm getting with this is, is there, we have a parade, I understand that, we, we, it's an awesome parade, I've participated in many, many times, many, many years. But this year's gonna, this year possibly could be different. You know, it's 2020, you know, the high school graduation had to have a drive-by. And that's unfortunate, those kids couldn't have their own graduation, they had waited 15 years of schooling and they couldn't have a traditional graduation. Something to remember, but... So my thoughts are, is where do you meet in the middle with this parade? So we had created a committee. And the committee said, you know, they thought about having a drive-by. I'm in favor of it, I'm in favor of having a normal parade too. But with what's going on right now, is where do you meet in the middle?
What, I got, I got an answer to that. If you look at the numbers of the COVID that we have in our county and in our town, they have remained consistent since I reopened the city, guys. We have stayed at four deaths, four deaths. We didn't have a spike in the city of Grants when I brought everybody back to work, and everybody's been back at work since then. Is that right, Laura? We haven't cut anybody loose back home, have we?
Yes, but we did have a spike. In the last week or so, we've had a spike.
Where?
Probably right after Memorial Day weekend. The numbers went up, I don't know the exact numbers, but I do know we had a spike.
They went up by 12 and they were not in the town. Look at your zip code when you look up the COVID.
It's probably true.
Okay? It did not go up in the town, it went up on the east end of the county out there in Pine Hill. Period. Okay? Nothing has happened in our town. The Navajo Nation came to town three weeks in a row while they closed Grant, cold closed Gallup. We got no spikes at all. None. It's time to get on with our lives, guys. Period.
So a parade is not just thrown together in a week's time.
Well, you got two weeks.
We typically are not involved in the parade except for doing the traffic control by which we're given that directive from the chamber of what's needed for traffic control. You have to have a traffic control plan that's approved by the DOT.
Okay, we've had the same traffic control plan approved by the DOT for the last 115 years. Okay? Period. It's the same plan, the route has not changed, guys. And it doesn't take anything to do that. My point being is, we need to support the Constitution. We need to support the people, that's what you took an oath to do. Not to violate the Constitution. Not to tell the people they can't gather, not to tell the people they can't speak. Period, guys, you took an oath before this town, before this community, and before God himself, that you would uphold the constitutions. Not an unlawful health order, guys, it is that simple. And if you're gonna swear to God and then you're not gonna do it, well, what is the use of the oath?
I got something to say. I understand Gallup's not gonna have anything.
Gallup never does for the 4th of July.
Yes, they do.
They don't, they all come here, Fred, call them ass.
The balloon fiesta has been canceled for the first time since 1972. And they make the bucks.
October? Balloon Fiesta's been canceled?
Yes.
That's too bad for us today.
And...
That's too bad.
Since Saturday, CBO has got eight new cases.
And where are they?
I don't know, more than that.
I do.
Eight of them since Saturday.
They're out there on Pine Hill, guys.
And McKinley has got 30 cases this Friday. And they are locked down.
Which shows your lockdowns don't work.
And then besides, the chamber, we have no director.
That's why Chris could take that over right now. It won't take nothing to do a parade, Fred. We've done it every year for 115 years, guys.
Well, you're gonna have, if you're gonna have a parade here, you should see, you've seen it, I've seen it.
Yes.
People line up like flies.
So if you're gonna have a spike, don't come, Fred.
Well, not coming.
Well, there you go.
What about, what about the committee and the volunteers? Most of them have said they're not gonna participate if it's a regular parade.
Then they don't have to participate.
So who's gonna facilitate the parade?
We will, as a city of Grants, Laura.
We're trying, Morty, it takes a party to try and get this done.
How come we've got it done every year before this? All of a sudden, this year it's a big deal.
They planned it months ahead.
Yes, and we've still got three weeks.
No, you only got next weekend, the week after May.
We have a week, about a week. So many of the volunteers have already expressed to me, some of them are in the crowd tonight, I don't know if you feel comfortable saying anything.
Call the council on this. Yes, you do. Well, I've already.
Many have said they will not help if it's a regular parade.
Yes, I've already brought it up.
Do you, do you mind if I approach?
Go ahead.
I just, as someone who has some experience organizing events, I was with Main Street for a year as the executive director. It does take longer than a month to plan a parade. It takes a lot of time, and the mayor makes a good point that there is the same route with the, you know, with a regular parade. Same traffic plan, right, no, no cost, no approval through DOT because it's already been approved, right? But at the same time, you have to think about the quality of, of the event you're gonna give.
That's my whole point, right there.
What's that?
Is the quality of the event we're gonna give.
Okay.
Okay? That's my whole.
So a great parade has a lot of floats, right?
A lot of horses.
So...
You can't get a horse to hit you.
Yeah, you can't, I mean, the backcountry horsemen have said that horses in a standing parade isn't good, and I don't know how they feel in a regular parade. I'm sure they'd be fine. But at the same time, you think of everyone else who has a float. I've, we've thought about doing it at Main Street to build a float, and I'm racking my head, well, how do I get a float ready in a week? And how do I get the money together? You know, all, all those just kind of things for the other people, not necessarily just for, for the city to organize it, so... Those things do come into play, if there's not a whole lot of floats, I've heard it from the Holiday Light Parade, we had 13 floats and we heard some, you know, just people were upset, they're like, why isn't there any more floats, so...
Well, you know what, we're already getting complaints about not having a parade.
Well, you're getting all day.
I mean, wow!
But so, then you have to look at, you know, again, what, what you're all doing right now, what's, you have to have to weigh the pros and cons of doing this parade, doing it another way or not doing it at all.
I'll entertain a motion for the parade, guys.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to support the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America. Les, you could make a float in a week, couldn't you?
You know what, we always do it like two days or three days.
Two days before, I know when I did mine for the light parade, I worked on it for one day before the parade.
Well, how about float not parade if you do one?
I know a few that will. I know a whole bunch of veterans on motorcycles are gonna show up. I know a whole bunch of people on four-wheelers are gonna show up. I know a whole bunch of people from San Mateo that would like to bring their horses, but they're not about to stand on the pavement in one place.
Well, I make a motion that we have a rodeo right here for July the 4th celebration.
Okay, the first one is the rodeo, I have a motion, you have a second. Second by your, second, Counselor Gargada. Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Pariya.
Yes.
Counselor Lucero.
Yes.
The animus on the rodeo, entertain a motion for the parade. Going once. Going twice.
Make a motion for what?
A motion for the parade. No, you made the motion for the rodeo.
No, I made a motion for the parade.
What did he say?
He said rodeo.
Makes a motion for the parade, second for a motion for the parade. You got a second there, Rick?
No, I took an oath to protect my community as well.
You took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That Constitution is the Constitution.
Yes, it does, yes, it does, Fred. And if you, if you stand here tonight and you say, "We're not gonna allow you to assemble," you're filing your oath. Period, yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, you are.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are. You stood here, took the oath, Fred. Yo, show me where it says, show me where it says, "Protect the people" in the Constitution.
Well, I am protecting them.
Yeah, you're protecting nothing, dude. Yo, ye of little faith, bro. Ye of little faith. Okay, so yes, come on up, Diane, and say something, please.
You say what you want.
Ye of little faith, brother.
I have a lot of mixed feelings about the whole situation. I was one of the people who called about the parade and I called, I think, all of the city councilors. I didn't get ahold of Friday Daye, the number that I had was wrong. And I couldn't get ahold of Laura. The phone went to mailbox and it was full, and I called multiple times, so... We're in favor of it for multiple reasons. But, but the top is, everybody's discussion has been protecting. We need to protect, we need to protect.
But we don't need to protect the Constitution, we need to throw it away.
So here's the deal. If everybody is in agreement that social distancing and the masks work, then why can't we work around that?
Well, here's my question for all of you. Albuquerque can have a gay rights parade that the governor condones and supports. Albuquerque can have riots where they tear up people's businesses downtown and the governor supports that. Where is, where is the control of COVID there? But we're gonna sit here and tell our citizens that we can't have a parade that we've been having for 114 years. But we're gonna let the gay riots go and have their parade in Albuquerque. And that was your biggest concern, Rick, when I talked to you earlier, what's Albuquerque can do? They're allowing it. They're allowing it.
Here's the other thing.
They were all over the street too, didn't you look at the video I sent you? They were on the street too, Rick. No social distancing, no nothing. What about the riots? That she condoned those too, no mask, no social distancing, and destroying businesses. Those cases, it's different, they're violating the Constitution? No, it's their First Amendment right, according to her.
Well, and also, I don't know how many of you have been like out in the community, I know, I know the mayor has, I know Eric's out there. We're out on a daily basis. We're still seeing people not come out. Even though things are open, the people who are super concerned with their health are still staying home. So I don't think you're gonna have the crowds for the, for the live parade that we normally have.
I know we're not.
When it's, you know, when we're fully open. People are still being very cautious. So when you go to the restaurants, there's not huge crowds. When you go to businesses, there's not huge crowds. People are still doing, I mean, they're doing more than they were before, but it's still minimal. So I don't think you're gonna have the crowds that we've had in the past. I think social distancing can be done well. And I think, you know, the people who want to wear masks will wear, can wear masks and, you know, whatever, but I think it can.
It's called free choice, Diane.
It is, it is free choice.
It's American way of life.
And that's what it's been, you know, that's what has been our...
Free choice, free Americans.
The whole time. You have the choice, you can stay home or you can go.
But the volunteers that put the parade on are not gonna be given a choice. I'm not gonna be given a choice. Can I stay home?
Yes.
Can Joanne stay home?
Yes.
And Roger and Chris and all of us that are gonna...
So why don't we just cancel everything then?
So you don't think that you...
Why don't we just cancel everything then, Laura? So nobody, there you go.
We don't wanna cancel.
There you go, all we're gonna do is cancel the parade.
We gotta meet, find somewhere in the middle.
Do you not think that you'll have enough volunteers to take care of the situation, is that, you don't think that...
We have a committee that's been working on it.
We got the motion, but we didn't get a second. So this thing is dead and we have three enemies of the Constitution sitting on the council. That's what the people in this town need to know, and that's what needs to be put out there. You have three people that do not support the First Amendment up here. Okay, they look the other way when Albuquerque does it, they look the other way when, when they have protests and stuff, that's all okay. But it's not okay for the citizens of Grants to gather and have a parade. It's okay to gather and have a rodeo though. You guys are so contradictory, this is bull. But that's okay, moving on to the next one, gun policy. Okay, I've been requesting the gun policy for six months, now I'm demanding it. Period. I don't want the police policies, I want the gun policy. About guns coming and going and the concealed carry. I know we don't have it in the budget for the concealed carry, but I want to change the, the policies to where if they have a concealed carry, they could carry at work. We won't pay for them to get trained or anything. But for those of them that have concealed carry, we're not gonna make it illegal for them to enter a, a city building with a gun.
Right now we do have one.
Yes, right now we have gun policies that say you can't come in. Diane and...
Carolyn.
Carolyn called and asked if they could bring their guns in here tonight, and I told them yes. So they are both armed in here tonight, okay? Next one, La Mosca Road Baby Project. Go ahead, Les, this is one you want to talk about.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Councilman, and Manager, Honored Guest, employees of the city. Thank you. You know, I, I received notification last week that, that there might be a change in direction of the city concerning the improvement of the road to La Mosca. I, I was, of course, concerned because I've been working on this a lot. And then I was even more puzzled because there's a resolution that was on the 24th of June of last year that said that they would support, the council would support that. Laura had Donald call me and say that the city had moved in a different direction or some choice that were similar to that. So, I immediately called Eric and I immediately called Modi. I understand that there's some maybe arbitrary numbers floating around. This really wouldn't cost the city anything if we did it correctly. It was a, a grant from NMFA. We applied for it. The maximum amount is $50,000. Laura, I think you made an assumption that we would get $35,000 maybe?
No, that's what we were told we would get on our other application.
On the other application for what?
Uh, we put two applications in at the same time, La Mosca and the Washington Jefferson flooding. We got notice on one that we, initially our notice was we didn't qualify and that was months ago. So, we had to bring our, our general fund down. Then the next notice said on the Washington Jefferson project, flooding project, that we only qualified for $37,000. So, Donald was assuming that that's probably what we would qualify for La Mosca.
Okay, so, we really don't know that for sure.
We don't know. We don't know that we qualify for anything. That was an assumption he made.
Right. So, so I think there was a, I'm sorry, you need to swing around. I think there was an assumption, I received notice that we were changing directions. And that, that the manager had chose not to head in that direction. And, and I think that's why I even talked to theologist a few days ago, that's the same way that we're headed now. So, I'm alarmed at how we can have a resolution to support, by unanimous resolution, to support and then one individual can make the decision to go another direction. I realize your shortfall, your budgets, I realize all of that. But I think if this were applied correctly, uh, it wouldn't cost the city anything. And I think the other communities around us might even help if, if there is a shortfall. The other thing is, is that it's presented as paving the road to La Mosca when really it's an economic opportunity for our community. So, even though the county might be the driving factor, it would be a project in the county. The largest impact's gonna be with the City of Grants and all the surrounding communities and tribal areas and even as far as Zuni. Uh, we have a lot of work involved in this, a lot of time. And we, you know, it would be nice to move forward. Uh, it is alarming to me that we just decided we're gonna stop.
And that was my conversation with Donald. Uh, Donald brought it to me and he said, "We don't qualify now. How about I ask the county? They might qualify now." He understood they did. I said, "I think that would be great." After he talked with them, they said, "No, they weren't gonna apply because they didn't have support either from commissioners or from the east side." I wasn't quite sure and Donald wasn't sure. And he, so he said, "What do we do now?" And I said, "Well, we'll have to wait three to six months, see how our budget plays." When we gave support, Les, we, we weren't giving dollar supports. We were saying, "Hey, we're behind this project. We think it's great." And, um, but we didn't oblige dollars. So, when we applied for the planning grant, we were under the assumption we'd get the full amount. Well, we didn't get anything. We're assuming we might qualify like our other project and get partial. So, how do we get the rest of that? And I told Donald, I said, "You know, I will try to work extra hard. There's gotta be money out there for this project." Not only for the planning, but the construction is really gonna be the big part. The planning is such a small seed compared to the construction. There's gotta be dollars out there. And I called you the other day and I told you, "I'm sorry that you, you understood that I don't support this. I'm not taking it another direction." We, we can't go anywhere without funding. And so, uh, we don't have it in our budget right now to kick in the extra or to kick in any for it. We just don't have it. But in three to six months, we might. Our gross receipts looked really good for this last month. So, it could change around within the next few months.
Thank God it's giving us money.
Yeah, I understand, but there's a lot of assumptions. If we continue with the application process, we would know facts instead of assumptions. That's what bothered me the most.
And so, where are we at in the application process? Are we done? We ain't gonna do it?
No, we were told we didn't qualify, that we had too much in our general fund.
In our money.
In our general fund.
When, when was that, may I ask?
Um, it's in the packet tonight. I gave the council a copy. I believe we got that notice in September.
Yeah, what year?
Of nineteen.
Yeah, so, and I, and we can reapply every, how often?
I believe every two years.
No, I think.
But our, our application sits in the pool for two years. So, it sits there.
Three months or six months?
We don't have to reapply, but it sits there. We can say, "Hey, where's the status of this?" That's like the other one we applied for at the same time, we did get notice that we qualify for $37,000 of the $50,000 possible. And, but we didn't hear on La Mosca, uh, Donald made an assumption that probably it's, it's gonna qualify for the same amount. So, we were trying to figure out, you know, maybe the county would help us out. Uh, we were looking for other avenues so that it's not gonna sit. We're just as anxious to get this project going as you are.
Les, have you approached Milan? What is your thoughts?
You know what? Milan also signed, uh, the same type of resolution. And, um, they, I've talked to the mayor there recently, but they said they were eager to support. Maybe Eric, you can help us out a little?
Um, yeah, so when, when, well, let's talk about this road because I know a lot of people on Facebook and people in the audience may not know, but the world. We, we think this is just a road, right? It's a road to El Taplo Mosca. Everyone in Grants, I guarantee, have been all the way up there. The scenery is beautiful. But this road is actually economic development. So, if you look at it and you're, I know everyone's done it. You've been passing an area, you Google it, you know, what's that, what's that town? You Google right away. You look at, uh, New Mexico. If you say, "Things to do in New Mexico," Google. It should be that, one of the options should be to drive the highest paved road in New Mexico. So, what that does is starts to bring in people from out of town. So, you start to grow your grocery receipts tax and get, so people don't know what your grocery receipts tax that does?
This is stupid.
We, uh, we use that money for projects around town. You, you see that project that we have there? We just did, everybody sees it. It's the, um, the Legacy Trail. Took probably seven years to plan. We started it. It cost you 1.2?
Yeah, yes.
Something like that, but we had to match a certain amount of funds, right?
Yeah, we got 500,000 for that, a little over 500,000. The rest was city match.
So, city match. So, economic development.
The guy here is a fraud. This government is a fraud. Three of you refuse to hold the Constitution after taking an oath. That's a joke. You guys are nothing but a frickin' joke. I'm outta here, Rick. Outta the rest of the meeting, buddy. Since you don't wanna follow the Constitution, do whatever you want.
I took an oath to.
You took an oath of the Constitution, Rick, period. And if you protect the constitutional rights of the people, you're protecting the people. That's it. This is a fraud. Our government in this town is a fraud.
So, back to the road. So, that's good stuff right there. You know, you, this road, it, it, it will bring people into our community. It always, if, we see grocery receipts tax and we average whatever we average, um, but we only allocated some money to different types of projects. People always ask, "Why don't we do this? Why don't we do that?" Well, you know, obviously, in Grants, New Mexico, we don't have very much money. So, we rely on grocery receipts tax to do these simple projects. We rely on grocery receipts tax to fund, um, events. We, we, for the lodgers tax, you know, we want people to come visit our community. We have been forty years, I'm forty years old, and I would say we've been around 85,000 to 95,000 people in those forty years. Hasn't grown. And why is that? Well, we don't have anything to attract, uh, come to Grants, New Mexico. There's nothing to attract here. So, what do we offer? We offer altitude. The only, no, Belen doesn't offer altitude. Gallup doesn't offer altitude. Altitude to that road to El Taplo Mosca would bring in people here. It would supply more jobs for all of us out there. It would supply our, our streets to be better. I don't wanna beat 30,000 people in Grants people. I don't. I'd like to be comfortable, 12. But I would love to see a million people visit us a year and spend their money. We have to think differently here in our town on how we need to make money. Because at the end of the day, it helps everybody and we have to start with having a seed there and start to seed with the road. It would attract so many things.
One of the pluses of the project is, in my mind, it, it may cost a lot, which all projects do, but it's not astronomical. But it's so simple to pave a road compared to trying to get, you know, somebody to build a ski lodge or to build some kind of business. We really have no control over that, but to pave the road would be very, very simple in my mind and doable.
So, you know, I'd like to inject right there real quick, like I mean, could, is that, you know, we do have, uh, it is in the TCP? So, we would have to be culturally sensitive all along the way. So, when we get the grant for the planning grant, we need to make sure we involve, you know, all the communities around us because that, that is a sacred mountain to many people. And it's many, sacred to all of us, but it has a different meaning to the, the people on the east side and the west side and the south side. So, if we do that, uh, you know, I've, I've been assured that if we, if we can be respectful and focus on education and how to keep the sanctity of the mountain, no zip lines, no commercialism, we might be able to get this through if we, if we work together as a community. Uh, but if we're fighting and bickering and complaining and not communicating and cutting programs without talking to everybody, it'll never work. And then, and then I worry that, you know, if we don't have full support of all of us, uh, you know, we're doomed, we're doomed.
So, Les, I was kinda surprised when Don said, the county said, "No," that we didn't have the support for the project from some commissioners and, you know, one, you think it's one.
I know it's one.
Do you think that it's people on the east as well? Cause I felt like, you know, from all the meetings, that we, we had pretty good response.
That was my question, Les. Uh, do we have the support from the neighbors to the east?
So, so, we do not have support from the Laguna Tribe, but they said, "Move forward." What they need is real data. They need real information. I'm not educated enough to do that. That's why we have to have a feasibility study so we know what the impact is. We know where we're headed. Uh, we have tentative support from Zuni. They gave us a verbal commitment to go ahead. I have one resolution from Reima Chapter House. You know, that's the Navo community. They, they, same support as, as what you have. And then, uh, you know, for Akama, he, uh, the governor, I met with him in, at the beginning of the year and he said, you know, "Move forward, keep us informed." So, until we have a definite no and a roadblock, I hope, and not to mention that we have, uh, support from the Forest Service. Our, our Regional Ranger Forest Supervisor has a, uh, letter also in support of the feasibility study. So, I think that the goal would be is to take bite size. Don't worry about the budget of how we're gonna build it. Don't worry about anything. Just figure out how we can work together, get a feasibility, get true data and say, "This is what the expectation is." And then, when we have that all cleared out, we can go start talking to our representatives and our senators and all that. But we really don't know what we're talking about until we have someone that has a degree in the background that says that, you know, "Eric, you're not Fuller Craft." It, it does make sense to do this, you know, or less you're not. So, I think that's the first thing. And I, and, and of course, you know, I'm, I'm a guy and I'm really impatient. So, anytime the can kicks, gets kicked down the road, it's frustrating. And, and we are experts in our community in doing that. You know, any little excuse that we can come up with, we say, "We don't wanna do it." So, I want, you know, I'm gonna build a fire under you. That's what I like to do. You know, I'm sure, you know, Laura and I, Laura and I had a very uncomfortable conversation. Uh, I didn't enjoy it. I don't, I imagine you didn't either. But we need to be motivated and yet sensitive at the same time, so.
Les, I'd like my comment.
Yes.
Uh, maybe for informational purposes, might be a little bit off, off subject, but, uh, you know, I've been doing a lot of thinking since that day that we met. And if it goes the direction that you were talking about, that it would bring a lot of tourism, a lot of increased traffic to, to Mount Taylor, okay? Then that, that, uh, well, one of the things that I know about Mount Taylor, up in Mount Taylor, up in, in the mesa there, there's a lot of radio towers that the FBI, the city, the, a lot of, a lot of organizations have radio towers out there. Uh, something else brought to my attention would be that we might put in the planning stages is fencing that. I don't know if the Forest Service would be, would be part of that process. But, uh, that, those towers need to be, uh, for safety see, for safety reasons, if you're gonna increase traffic up there. Especially if we have a lot of kids and stuff like that and they start going up to them towers, that's, that's very, that could be very hazardous.
Yeah, and that, that would also be addressed in the feasibility study. I'm glad you kinda mentioned that because, uh, that's often overlooked is that the towers up there is a huge economic engine. So, it is not like a pristine wilderness. There, of course, you all know the sacred winds shoots this information off the top of there. Everybody that has sacred winds is, uh, that's where the signal comes from. So, it's, it's not like it's an area that's not being taken advantage of for economic reasons. There are about fifty some odd leases up there that have towers and that would have to be taken into consideration. But if you go up there right now, you're under security cameras every move. So, rest assured for the public that they watch your every move. There's cameras everywhere up there right now.
So, the road and economic growth. So, just a quick reminder that, you know, we've got 30,000 people that pass on I-40. And we, and we don't, we don't pull off anybody. So, just think about how many people pass on I-40 that either has a business or might know one, some that has a business and they get pulled off because they wanted to go to the highest paid road in New Mexico. Our community is clean. They look at, uh, the surrounding areas, our culture, the native culture, the Hispanic culture. And they said they might bring their business here. I don't know what that is or what business will come, but I know that road will attract people here. So, anytime you guys see me or you, you wanna email me on the road, you know, I'd love to talk to you because I'm forty years old and I always wonder why we haven't done anything in Grants to bring economic growth. You hear about our large businesses shutting down, downsizing. We need economic growth here, people. And I believe that that road can come. And hopefully, you know, I mean, the planning stages, yes, it's, it's gonna take some time, but we need to plant the seed now because I don't wanna go out of office in four years and, and not leave and going back to the site where you guys are at and ask, "Why? Why, why, why?" We need to think about how we can get Grants to Mexico making money. Because we need to, uh, get some economic growth here and that road will bring it. Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't have any other comments.
Real quick, do you need 50,000 for the feasibility?
Perfect. Write a check.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't know the exact number. Laura had arbitrarily chose 80,000, but I, I think I talked to Mario one time and he said that 50 is more than enough. So, maybe we, you know, we might talk to some of the other firms and see what they, their expertise. I know Wilson has done those kind of studies and I'm not, I don't work for them. I don't get anything, but I just, that's the only answer I know.
The estimate was 55,000 for that, but I believe Wilson and Company said they would work with us.
Do we have a correct figure or?
No, we would have to have money available and then enter an agreement with the firm. But, but probably 50,000.
Is that what we would be voting on tonight, is 50?
We don't, we don't have money. We didn't, we didn't get an award from NMFA. We put in an application to get a planning grant. We, we were not eligible.
Yeah, but you keep saying that, but that's, that's, that's kinda the truth, but it's not. All you have to do is tell them one more time again, "We wanna know what amount we're eligible for" and reactivate that. You could've done that in January and you could've done it in March.
I just heard about it this week when Donald talked to me and it was this week he called or was it last? I've lost track of time. But, um, he's the one working on those projects, um, and he informed me and he told me he was going to the county, but we've, I've not seen anything. I get the notices.
Yeah.
And I've not gotten anything on La Mosca. I did on the Washington Jefferson, saying that we qualified for 37,000. So, Donald's guessing that maybe La Mosca will be about the same, based on our, our, what we have in the bank.
So, and the reason, the reason they're not giving you the full amount is because if, if you had X amount of dollars in the bank and you were going to get sponge money from somebody and they would say, you know, "Why don't you use some of your own money first?"
Right.
So that's the real reason why.
The issue is our own money is committed to First Street and Washington Bridge. We have several projects still on the burner that we have matching dollar amounts we have to give.
So it'll all vanish. I think if we maybe wrote a letter or something, we could justify that we need the full amount.
Yeah, they'll want to see that it's gone or, yeah. Or they may make an exception, we can try that and see.
And we have pretty good local representation on that board that reviews those because, you know, Patty is on the lunchroom and then so is Harry, I believe Garcia. So they have, we have, they submit those and then they review them. It's not like you know personally, but they just look at them and say, yeah, you're there. So we'd have to put the pressure on them.
That helps.
They're all right, Rick. Only committed to trying to find how really can find some money for this feasibility study. We'll find it. I mean, it's just going to take some baby steps and paperwork and BS, but we're going to find it because if you talk to any restaurant owner in this town, any business owner in this town, they will tell you that they're favored for it. We got to try to provide for our business owners here also too, so they can keep their doors open. How many times do we hear month to month, another business is closing down? So I'm committed to trying to help you out, Les, and we'll find that money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Hi, Rick.
Thank you, Les.
Can we turn him up?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hold on, okay. Yeah, so what do we need to do at this point, Laura? Are we going to apply for a grant again at this point or?
I think we can have Donald contact them and just, you know, try to put some pressure that maybe he can give them the figures of what we're going to be expending out. We had already told them that we had a bunch of big projects going out. We thought First Street would already be started and some of our money would be down, but First Street's not started yet. So that's part of why we're still in the same boat. But Donald, I'll have him contact them and see, see if we can, you know, show them what we're going to be expending and have them let us get this going.
Okay, so do we need to table this at this point?
Right, there's no action that the council needs to take.
Okay.
Not even that we're supporting it?
We already have that. We already have a resolution saying we're supporting it and the council voted to apply for the funding. Yes. Yes, it's in your packet.
Any other questions?
No questions.
No.
Okay, let's move on to Second Street Channel Pedestrian Bridge Construction Award.
Very good.
I'm taking Don Hadeo's place, so I'll just read off what you all have in the packet. The city opened bids for the Second Street Channel Pedestrian Bid Bridge on May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. Summary of the bridge bids have been provided in the attached memo. And so Wilson and Company has recommended to the city to consider the CES procurement by Compass Engineering and Construction. They were the ones that were awarded the Washington Bridge project and under the CES, they are a contractor. And there's also a subcontractor, G-Sendable Construction that's named. So the bids that have been submitted were outside of a favorable bid package and that's why we asked Compass and I believe a few others for a CES package. So including the GRT, total bid of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and ten cents would be the total bid.
That's including GRT, right?
That's including the GRT. So Don's request, as well as my own is to make the recommendation to award the project to CES in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two, four twenty-three and ten cents. Without this, the city risks losing the state funding portion of seventy-five thousand, or excuse me, seventy-five percent in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. So this is seventy-five, twenty-five proposal.
So one more time, this is how much?
Seventy-five percent is grant. Twenty-five percent is, is city.
Seventy percent is city.
Okay, so what's the dollar amount?
So dollar amount, two hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents is state funding. The remaining balance will be covered by the city.
So it looks like the contractor's giving us a pretty good deal compared to the bids above.
He's already here, so.
That's correct. So they were able to greatly reduce the mobilization.
Mobilization.
Versus when the bids went out, they weren't sure if they were going to get the first bid or not.
Okay. When did they anticipate to start their work?
I think it might be in here, maybe not.
I don't, I don't see that.
I saw September. August, maybe, August or September it looks like.
The Pet Bridge is a, it's pretty much pre-constructed and so it's, it'll be a plug and play project.
It's just going to be a prefab project.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, so do we want to move forward and go ahead and approve this? We have a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the two seventy-two point four twenty-three point ten.
To CES.
CES.
C, CES. I'm sorry.
Compass Engineering?
Actually, it's going through a cooperative. They put stuff out for bid and we're utilizing their bids.
Oh.
They're cooperative.
I'll second the motion.
I'll just look at that being final.
I'll second the motion.
We're approving two seventy-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-three and ten cents, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is it a second?
Yes, I second the motion.
Wait, is it second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Okay, Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Redarte?
Yes.
Councilor Padiya?
Yes.
Okay, approved.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, let's see, moving on, Second Street Channel.
Okay, this is. Very good. So last year, the city applied for the NMFA Water Trust Board funds in the amount of one, two, one point two million. That we were awarded this as a sixty percent state funding and forty percent loan. This is predetermined by the NMFA policy. And so this will be the concreting. I believe Wilson Engineering did a, did a whole slideshow on this. And so this will be concreting Second Street Channel. Laura and I, we had the opportunity to go and check out in Rio Rancho something similar. Turned out to be a very beautiful project. It kind of reminds me of stucco on the sides and it looks very nice.
So rather than a cement look, it looks like stucco. It looks brown, so you think it's dirt if you don't go up, down and touch it.
Right, looks very natural.
And it's very, it's got a lot of texture, so skateboarders don't like it, so they won't be skateboarding in the canal.
That's purely a byproduct.
Mark, this is, this canal is just from Second Street.
Try it, try it now. I turned it down a little.
Yeah, it's good. So this, this channel is from the Second Street Bridge to just a new bridge or where does it go? Goes from the Second Street Bridge Water Crossing of the Arroyo. How far to the north?
So this is showing from Roosevelt to, past Washington.
Oh, goes that far?
So that's, hopefully that's right and hopefully Don's not cursing my name. But from what I understand, that is, that is what we're looking at. So from Roosevelt, hopefully someone can correct me if I'm wrong.
I thought it was smaller, but.
I think it's, I think it's just the new overhead structure we're doing for the high school, right?
Okay. And then, and then small section, there's a small section that goes to San Jose Creek there too, correct?
Yes.
That's exactly, I think Donald said that Roosevelt is going to be another phase down the road.
Thank you.
Yeah, because they quit it. So just to let everybody know, it's just a small section.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you for the correction.
I wish it was that price, had it open.
One point two doesn't buy what you're used to apparently. So it is, it is my recommendation or Don's recommendation as well that you approve Wilson and Company Task Order zero six one two two zero, preparing and finalizing water trust board readiness to proceed items for the Second Street Channel project as it does not impact the presently approved budget.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pass this zero six one two two zero, Second Street Channel Improvement Project.
Is it a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilor Padiya?
Yes.
And Councilor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
And Councilor Redarte?
Yes.
Okay, go through.
Thank you.
Next, let's see, Ordinance two zero one two four five, authorizing, authorizing the assurance of sale of two point five million of general acquisition bonds.
So council, we have Linda Melindres here this evening and she's going to explain to you the next process for our bonds that our community passed recently.
Thank you, Laura. Council, good evening. My name is Linda Melindres and I represent the city as bond counsel. This is the next step in the process of getting funding for your geo bonds. The, as Laura said, the voters approved the geo bond questions on your March election ballot and that is for one point five million for the water system improvements and one million for the wastewater system improvements. In March, excuse me, in May, the application to the New Mexico Finance Authority went before the board and your application was approved. So the next step is for the council to consider and move forward with the bond ordinance and that's in front of you today. What the bond ordinance has are several items that it sets forth. One would be the actual maturity schedule. Last Monday, we locked interest rates with the New Mexico Finance Authority. So on page three, it sets out the security, the interest rate and the maturity schedule of the bond ordinance. The bond ordinance also includes the form of the bond. It includes the other authorizing items that would need to be approved going forward. And how this works is if the bond ordinance is approved, we would move forward with, I would be drafting the closing documents. And one of those documents is the bond purchase agreement. That is the contract with the New Mexico Finance Authority, which has the, basically the terms of how they're going to be the lender on these bonds and you all would be borrowing that total amount of two point five million. The other agreement is an escrow agreement. And the way that the New Mexico Finance Authority works is that it holds with the Bank of Albuquerque, an account for the city. And then as the invoices and purchase price and different items come in as your projects are moving forward, you would submit a requisition form and that requisition form is an exhibit to the bond purchase agreement. And that's how then the city would pay back those invoices. So that's kind of the process that New Mexico Finance Authority has. So there's an escrow agreement as well. But those are the main items that are set forth in the bond ordinance. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. And I don't know if we have Hilltop Securities, who's the financial advisor to the city on the line, but I'm happy to try to answer the finance questions if they're not here. And if you have any questions, we can, George and Carla would be more than happy to have, take any questions and answer those questions for the council.
Very exciting that we're going to be able to do some substantial work on our water and sewer lines. Very exciting.
Oh, and that, as this process moves forward, if it's approved, our closing date is scheduled for August seventh. So that's when that money would hit, would be in August.
Are we talking improvements here?
Yes, it would be new water and sewer lines and taps into the homes, right, Mark?
Yes, that's right.
It's new or like to help for the existing?
It can be used in kind?
For existing structures to approve? This is not to help with future development?
I don't know if the language restricts.
I'm not saying future development, but like if someone needs water and, you know.
We don't have a line.
A line, is that, is that what it is? Or is it just to like replace all this crappy line?
That's what it was intended for, is to replace the.
Crappy line.
Yes.
But in reality, it probably could be for new development, although our big concern is those failing lines where people already live and businesses already exist.
And those lines have already been targeted?
Yes, we, we have a plan. Mark might be able to tell you more about that.
Correct, councilor. So there's an asset management plan that was put together by Wilson and Company last year that went through and evaluated the criticality and the assets survivability or their expectancy of life. And so with that matrices, we're able to figure out which lines are most important and how they come to the top of the list.
And how much advancement are we going to be able to do with this? Does it address major portions of the city or?
So, so this is in combined efforts with also a USDA project that there's five million just in the wastewater that was approved this month. And so that'll be a portion, I don't want to get the numbers wrong, but there's a portion of that that is federal grant money and there's a portion of it, sorry. And there's a portion of that that will also be a city match. And so with five million plus the one million, we're attacking six million on the sewer side alone. And then we'll, we anticipate getting the water side done as well. That's five million with the one point five for a total of six point five. So all of this is rolling out within the next couple of years. So to answer your question, we have it phased out with some older sections of the city and we are going to get a significant portion of, of the old section of city done. And so I'd encourage anyone actually to stop by Don and my office and we'd love to take the time to show you on a map what size of area we anticipate.
I think the first area is up in the area of McDonald's and up that hill.
Right.
Yeah.
There's, there's some serious water quality issues that they're experiencing in the San Jose area as well as Zuni Canyon Road. Many times they're trying to use the fire hydrants and there's not enough pressure. This is addressing many of the, all of those concerns. There was some future businesses that have tried to get over, but because of the lack of fire protection, La Quinta, I believe we lost their business because of the lack of fire production. This will also address that.
Yeah, that's what we really, we need to start really laying that out. Where would future development need to go? And we've talked about Sacoleras. We've also talked about the west end of town that we need the availability of lines over here to attract some big businesses in that area.
And that, that particular, that one, let me see if I can get my.
let me see if I can get my question correct, uh, because we're going to be, uh, replacing a lot of the infrastructure when we go down the rest of First Street, right?
Yes.
And that's not part of that, right, is it?
Correct. That's a completely separate project.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So we're entertaining a motion to pass this ordinance?
Well, I make a motion that we pass Ordinance, uh, 20-1245.
My second.
Okay. Counselor Ossia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Roderick?
Yes.
Counsel Perea?
Yes.
Okay, it's approved.
Thank you, Ms. Melindres. Thank you.
Next item is the Grants Main Street Project.
Yes, we have a couple of representatives here from the Grants Main Street. Take a minute. Can we take a minute while you set up?
Sure.
A potty break?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor? Yeah, I'm plugging in a presentation. Will provide it, and then I'll, I'll share the screen. What's another? It is, uh, it's a presentation.
Oh, it's made, uh, Rick back there.
Oh, uh, displayed in the presentation.
Oh, oh, you're trying to do the presentation.
I'm there, Rick.
So he can see the.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Can you see that, Counselor? Can you see the presentation?
Okay, William.
Good afternoon, Counsel. Good evening, good night. I'm not sure what it is anymore, but. My name's Joanne Martinez. I am the president of the Grants Main Street Project. Counsel, Laura, thank you so much for allowing us this time to present. Um, I want to, uh, we're also going to do a brief presentation about the projects that we've done in, in our community as the Grants Main Street Project. And just an informational for you to, to get a feeling for what Main Street does.
So hello, Counsel, Ms. Manager. Um, as Joanne had already stated, it's kind of just a informational presentation. Uh, the name speaks for itself as a retrospect, kind of a look back on what Main Street has done over the past couple of years. Uh, if you turn to the next page in your packets, uh, you'll see we were incorporated in September 25th, 1996. That's 24 years that Main Street has been working in the community. We've been, you know, we didn't hit the ground running because obviously we probably don't know what we're doing. You can see our first officers and, and board, um, people that, and I've been here three years. I don't know who they are, but they must have meant something, I would say. But either way, um, you know, this, that's our humble beginnings is who incorporated us and all the work that, all the different faces that have come through Main Street. Um, you know, I, again, as you can see, it's not the same people. Main Street has seen a lot of different directors, a lot of different presidents, and a lot of different board members. So, um, it's always changing, and, uh, Winston Churchill always said that change is improvement is, sorry, excuse me, changing is improvement, always changing is perfect. So, uh, I see that Main Street always having new, fresh ideas helps to make Main Street what it is. Uh, you can go to your next slide. The next slide talks about the four-point approach. The four-point approach is what New Mexico Main Street, our parent organization, uh, gives to us to work by. Uh, we live and die by the four-point approach. We, so to go into it, the first point is organization. Our organization point is to basically build all of the funding, all the volunteers, all the supplies that is needed for all the things that we want to do. Uh, so each of these have generally a, a task leader, um, someone who manages each of the tasks that go on within each of the, the points. Uh, and the organization chair for the task committee, uh, does a lot of work as far as finding grants, finding volunteers, that kind of thing, planning. Uh, design is what it sounds like, you know, we're, we're in the community, we're doing hands-on projects. If it's putting amenities like the Fire and Ice Stage, or if it's doing facade squads like, like what we did back in the day with Rockies on Route 66. Uh, we like to totally re, redevelop areas, uh, redevelop properties and make them look beautiful for tourists, for the community, for everyone. Uh, the next one is economic vitality. Sorry. Economic vitality is kind of a broad, uh, term, but what way we see it, it often deals with the support aspect that we do. So we support our businesses, we support, um, other organizations, we support just about anything that goes on in the Main Street District. Um, and the economic vitality isn't key in that by going out and being face-to-face with businesses, face-to-face with people, getting their consensus, um, and often finding out what it is that the Main Street District needs by doing market analysis and things like that. Uh, the last thing is promotion. Uh, that's kind of what I think we're most known for is our promotions, uh, for the events that we put on. We put on a lot of them, a slew of them, you know, we have the Holiday Light Parade, Fire and Ice, uh, Fire and Ice Bike Rally, Seven Trails of Gold, we have the Easter Egg Hunt, we have a lot. We have a lot. And, uh, the main deal for promotions is to brand the community, brand the Main Street District, and promote, uh, commerce and development in the Main Street District. That is its, its true goal. So, um, that's just a bit of a background to go to the next slide or next sheet. So the next year just pictures, things that we have done over the years. As you can see, in 2013, we had New Mexico Main Street come and facilitate trainings. Um, you know, when New Mexico Main Street can come, it's, it's one really awesome for us because they are just a wealth of knowledge. But not only that, um, they bring in a lot of knowledge for all the people who attend, and it's free to the, the city and to us. They are, you know, professionals in what they teach, and they come as, uh, consultants that are paid already by the state of New Mexico. So it's really, really awesome whenever they can come and work directly with the group, directly with the business, or directly with us to help, uh, further more projects and things that we want to do. Uh, the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan, the MRA Plan, if you haven't heard of it or don't know it, uh, it's a really awesome plan. It's kind of what started to spring up some of the, uh, like the Legacy Trail, like the redevelopment of Santa Fe Avenue, um, and some other different key projects that are helped to catalyst, uh, that will act as a catalyst to forward the economic base of the Main Street District. Uh, and then last year I put on a small business workshop, uh, you know, my downfall, I'll tell you right now, was promotion. I cannot get the word out fast enough or large enough. So I had six people attend, um, they all enjoyed it. It was over funding options and funding availability through different organizations, uh, and agencies in the state. If you go to the next slide, uh, again, you know, economic vitality supports almost all things. So, Sibola Trail Alliance had a meeting greet a couple of years ago, and, uh, you know, they've been a really great group in the city. They forwarded a lot of, you know, the few races they do are really great, and then not only that, but their trail days, their work on the, on the mountain to, to create more trails and do maintenance on those really helps grow tourists and makes it a worthwhile trip whenever they come to go hike. Um, and then we've also, through economic vitality, gone to different events like the Bloom Fiesta to help, um, advertise grants, help advertise the Main Street, and things like that. Oh, excuse me. Next slide. Uh, so as an organization, we've kind of been able to solidify some funding. Um, the Walmart Community Grant is a pretty common one. It's not that hard, and it's really great for facade squads. Uh, we've been able to solidify those for five years, five or five years. Uh, and then we host other fundraisers, uh, throughout the year. We did hot dog sales for the Fourth of July one year. Um, we try and do yard sales often to create, to fundraise. And that, those funds that we raise, they go directly to our design projects. Um, you know, we don't see, the director doesn't see that money. We hold that so that way we can do, uh, meaningful design projects and really make a change in the community. Uh, next slide. So here are some of the projects we've done in design. Uh, the Riverwalk Amphitheater was a project that Main Street headed, um, by painting, developing the place, um, doing the landscaping. Um, those are all just the pretty pictures, but there were some more of, you know, doing groundwork, laying down the concrete, laying down the frame. Um, and it's a really great site. I mean, I love to walk by there. I go bond San, uh, San Jose Legacy Trail, and, um, I like to see the Riverwalk. I kind of wish there'd be more open mics, but I don't know. I guess I gotta do that. You gotta, but I gotta see that change. Want the change, gotta see the change.
Marjorie.
Uh, so there's just a few pictures there. You can go to the next slide. Um, the Fire and Ice Stage Rehab, we had repainted it 2014. In 2009, we had solidified the capital outlay funds to be able to build the Fire and Ice Stage as it is, as well as the pavilions. And so a couple of years later, we went back and painted it. Um, if I'm not right, if I'm not wrong, it's been repainted recently?
Um, I put in a work order for it, but I don't know that they've gotten it done yet.
Someone told me that they saw someone painting, so I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Yeah, we do it about every other year. For sure, it starts looking bad.
Yeah. So, I mean, in that year, we had done it and, uh, just something that we thought needed to be done, it's on Main Street, and it, it, it's a good asset for the city, for all the events and things that we do that happen in the city. Next slide. Uh, these are some of the facade squad projects. Most of them, actually all of them were in 2014. Um, the last facade squad we did might have been on second time around. I'm not quite entirely sure. But you can see, we've done things like putting up cardboard on, on glass windows so windows don't get broken, but then painting them so they're not just plywood on, on the windows. And then, as you can see, Rockies was, was one of the bigger projects we did, and it was a really great project there. You can go to the next slide. Some other miscellaneous projects, uh, the window painting project has been, was started, uh, 2018. Uh, it's picked up a lot of track. Uh, our lead over here, Roger, has done a lot of great work to gain the community to rally and, um, really just, really get into this project. It involves putting Christmas paintings on business windows, and it's, we use it as a little fundraiser, but it's also to get ready for the Holiday Light Parade, kind of get everyone in the Christmas spirit. Uh, you can go down, down below, the Caboose Restoration Project is a long work in progress. Um, I think COVID, you know, COVID's really slowed down the work on it. But for the most part, the community has, um, rallied behind us on this. Businesses have donated a lot of materials, uh, and we're still looking for more fundraisers, uh, or, excuse me, uh, more donors to help us fundraise for our brick, uh, Buy a Brick Foundation. We'll end up putting a brack, brick patio around the caboose and, um, ideally, well, they will be engraved. And so those who, who buy a brick have their name solidified on that patio for as long as they last, you know? And so we think that's really great. It's a great way to fundraise and also a great way to provide something else in the, in the parks and in the city. Uh, another one is our, uh, excuse me, the Friends of Main Street flower boxes. Kind of small, I apologize, but we had made a bunch of flower boxes. Unfortunately, we never ended up using them. But the idea was to send them out to our, our Friends of Main Street, the businesses and the, the businesses that are on Main Street and those that support us. We were going to give them flower boxes for their help and for their support. And then the community cleanup we did last year was a effort to try and clean up some of the properties to make them ready for development, for people who might want to move in, make a development on there, that kind of thing. Go to the next slide. Uh, our promotions is the last kind of section, so we've done, like I said, a lot of events. This is our Holiday Light Parade. Um, we've been doing it since, well, we had the 23rd one last year, and we're on 24 years as an organization. So we've been doing it for just about as long as we've been alive as an organization. Last year, we tried putting in a more interactive, kind of fun activity park called Raider Games. Um, had a lot of people like it. Unfortunately, we just couldn't get it implemented this year, but I'd like to see it continued in the years, uh, following. You can go to the next slide. Uh, the Seven Trails of Gold is what we call our flagship event. We'd like to have that as our tourist, you know, tourist-bringing event where we have people from all around the state come. And we, we leverage the tourists to come by having a game called Geocaching. It's a outdoor interactive game. It's kind of like a scavenger hunt. And you play on your phone, and they go around and look at all the different things. All the, you know, we set them, we set them out at different locations in the county, around the city. It's a great way that businesses can get foot traffic. It's just they have a geocache right for their business. They're going to find it, and, uh, it's just a fun way to get around and find your way around the city. You go to the next slide. Uh, we also, over the past year, had tried, you know, welcoming any new business that had opened up. We saw a really huge spike in 2018 and 2019 of new businesses. And so you can kind of see, uh, at least six of them, you know, that there's seven. So seven businesses that, you know, open, Casino Comatro actually moved, so they weren't necessarily a new business, but, you know, for the most part, they're all new businesses, and we tried our best to not only just welcome them, but, you know, we offered $35 of advertisement on Facebook to help promote them, get their name out there for, for people to see. So that was a really cool experience, a really nice thing to do. Next slide. The last thing is just kind of all the other events that we've had our hands in or that we've, that we've implemented ourselves. The Fire and Ice Bike Rally was our, was kind of our, was our thing. Uh, the Easter Egg Hunt, we did for a little bit, um, and then I think Milan does it now. Uh, the Field of Honor was something that, uh, John Martinez kind of brought up when he was, or still is with Main Street, but when he was more active. And since now, the, uh, American Legion has taken more control of it. They, they do a good job with it. Uh, the Veterans Day Celebration, we've been doing it for four or five years now. Um, it's something nice for the veterans. The Shop Small Saturday is a really cool event. We try and have all the businesses after Thanksgiving open up and have this big blowout sale called Shop Small Saturday, and to try and beat the Cyber Monday sales as well, as well as Black Friday. So, uh, that's cool. Then Historic Route 66 Fall Fiesta. It's been a collaborative effort between us, the city, and Chamber of Commerce. And we've, you know, usually done either car shows or chili eating contests and things like that. So, uh, we have our hands in a lot. We've tried to stay active. We do as much as we can with the, with what we're available, what's available to us in the, in the work. So, um, that's about all I have. Do you have any questions over what you've seen?
Any questions?
Just bringing Rick back. Where's Rick? Or just Rick? Rick can come back. Counselor Manager.
Sorry.
So while he's doing that, I would just like to thank the, the board members. Main Street always has had a very dedicated group of board members that are willing to jump in there and work very hard. And so, um, we really admire you for your volunteerism in the community, and this was very helpful. I think we forget about all the things that have been accomplished, and so it's always good to get reminders.
It's good for us to do this more often.
Right.
Thank you, Laura. So, um, first, you know, I'd like to say along with the, the manual labor that we provide at Main Street, we also, the capital outlay comes the, from Main Street for some of these projects as well. So that, it's been beneficial to the city, and I just want to commend the city, like, for the beautiful parks and things like that. I told Laura that I had visited about 10, 15 years ago with my husband to a softball tournament that Budweiser was sponsoring. And I was really disappointed when I came through here. It did not look like it looks now. And so you've, you've done a great job bringing the city to life, and so we certainly appreciate that. Also, I'd like to thank you for your support in the past, and Laura has, you know, written grants and helped, uh, helped us succeed. Unfortunately, at this time, we don't feel like we, we can move forward. We're not in the, in the right place right now to move forward with a contract. We would like the opportunity to defer for a year and take, use that time to restructure, rebuild our board, find an executive director that, uh, that we feel would be able to, uh, accomplish that position. It's, it's a high-level position. It's, it's a high level position. You need to have really good organization skills, computer skills, communication skills. And we haven't been able to afford that person up to now. And with the reduction of funds, we completely understand due to COVID and other things. It's, you know, it's what's got, what has to happen and we just don't want to take that money now because we're, we don't feel like we're in a good place to, to fulfill your, fulfill a contract for the city. But all, what we are asking though, is that you allow us to stay in our building for the upcoming year. We are, we'll, we'll continue to pay the rent, but we, we are going to continue to meet. We have five board members that are totally committed to operating as if though we were an active Main Street. We have support from New Mexico's Main Street. We didn't make this decision lightly. We met at least six times, if not more via WebEx and we had New Mexico Main Street in on the calls as well. And so, um, you know, it's, it's disappointing, but I think it's a good time for us to, to refresh and try to get back to where we need to be so that we can be more effective. So I really would like to thank you for the opportunities and for the funding that you offer to us.
So one suggestion I would have for any nonprofit is try to figure out ways to diversify your funding so that you're not reliant, say on the city or the county or just government or just grant funding, but that you kind of hit a realm of several things because when things get bad and you lose one pot of funding, then you can rely on your others and hold steady hopefully. But that would be my one recommendation to all nonprofits that, and, and that's easier said than done, definitely.
Yeah, and, and you know, we keep reusing the same resources and so that, that those seem to become thinner and thinner as time goes on. But yes, you're right. And so luckily though, Main Street financially, um, over the last four years have, we, we started with $30,000 in the bank and we still have about that much. So we've been able to pay for all of our events and things like that through fundraising. However, I mean, the, the money the city helps us with does pay basically the executive director salary and, and so there are some creative ways, as Laura says, to access money and, um, New Mexico Main Street will help us with that and we will start planning and looking in that direction in the future.
So if you guys, so if you decide to, or you are deciding to, to take a break, but you guys will come back?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
At what point in time?
Well, you'll be, next year we'll be at Louder's Tax, so that'll be the start of it. And then we will, uh, move forward and try, work with Laura as we always have to, to put a contract in place that will benefit the, both organizations.
So the current board that you have going right now is going to stay intact, right?
Yes, so we may shift positions. That's most likely going to happen, but all of us are committed.
100%.
We thank you guys for your, your hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I, I appreciate, you know, what you guys, the effort that you guys put into because um, it's not easy to organize anything. I mean, uh, I, I've been a part of the Quadraflon team for the last 10 years and, you know, I took it for granted that, holy cow, what kind of work they put in. You know, the Gaineses family, the mechanics, they're on the field before we even know what quad is here. They're spending hours and hours and hours and nobody sees. And it's the same thing that your organization probably does too. There's a lot of things that people don't see that you guys are not getting credit for. But everything that you have done in our community so far to date since 1996, we appreciate it because it's just making our town better. And as people roll through, we want to make sure that they stay, they come back, they spend our money because at the end of the day, grocery receipts tax is what builds our infrastructure in town. Roads, sewers, parks, the quality of our life. So that you guys are an organization that helps it. So please come back, please come back strong and, uh, we'll see what we can do.
Awesome.
Thank you.
We would also like to say that we will continue to partner with the city, like with the parade or any events, any volunteer help that you, that we could offer. We were absolutely would, willing to continue to participate.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for talking.
That's what the cemetery rules are.
So in your packet, you have the current cemetery rules have been updated and the changes are actually on page two. Uh, under the top section, the last bullet in the top section, we added benches will not be placed in locations that can be used for plots and must be approved by the city or the advisory board in advance. We, we had a problem recently where that was kind of an unspoken rule, but the new staff did not know that. And so we, we realized we needed to get that in the rules. And then, um, G Nan helped us update the very last section on the second page about sections, um, just cleaning up the language and, and where would be the next section for reservations. So not a lot of changes, but just getting it updated so it reflects what's happening. Yes, so if you can formally approve those.
Let me, let me ask a quick question, Nora. There are some benches already out there, right?
Yes.
Are those going to be removed or?
No, they will stay. I believe all of the benches are in compliance except for one. This last year, we had a bench that actually the people bought a plot and was put on a plot because we were unaware that the cemetery advisory board, many of them have been on the board for years, had decided that we wouldn't utilize plots. And that makes sense because space is very limited. So, um, but it had, it wasn't in the rules. So, um, our clerk at that time didn't know that we were not supposed to do that and,
So in the future, um, for future, uh, because we've been discussing the future development of the cemetery.
Yes.
Um, are, are we looking at sparsity spacing them or, or putting some, or not putting some or?
Typically what's happened is families will come forth and say they want to sponsor a bench. And so they, we've, we've allowed them many times to pick out the bench and pay for it and sometimes they put a plaque and we've selected, uh, the advisory board's been very good to go over and select an appropriate place that's near their loved one's grave. But, um, that's probably what will happen now. We have one in the works that a family is requesting to put a bench. There may come a point where we have, we don't have room, but as long as we have room and sponsors will allow benches and it adds to the cemetery.
Okay.
There'll be places right away, you know, away from the burial area, being that right away, you know, like they are now. But we, what we do, we have to get together with Jacobs because they know where the water lines are from what it says. You know what a bitch.
Where there's a water line.
Water lines. Or any utility.
Okay.
Okay, you make the motion?
I make a motion, approves our changes.
All right, second.
Counsel Reddy?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes, sir.
And Counsel Pineda?
Yes.
Will the regulations be approved?
Thank you.
Next item is the Resolution 20168 Riverwalk Trail Funding Agreement Extension.
Thank you. Um, before you is the, uh, request for an extension of the funding agreement, uh, Control Number 6100983. You all know it as the Riverwalk or the Legacy Trail. The project is 95% complete. Privacy fences are up. Uh, just a, a final walkthrough is needed. Unfortunately, the paperwork takes quite a bit longer to roll out and so, uh, the time required would be a couple of months. Uh, but just to be safe, Don and I are asking, uh, to extend the funding agreement from June 20th, 2020 to December 31st, 2020. This would just give us, uh, six additional months to close it out.
Any questions?
What, what, um, you said that, uh, the, the project is pretty, pretty much complete? What isn't complete yet?
I, I can't think of anything. The fencing's up, the, the lights are, yeah.
I think it's paperwork.
Yes.
It's paperwork, that's why.
Yeah.
It's paperwork or whatnot, but the walkthrough, I mean, obviously we know right the, the roots that we are going to address that here soon, but, um, that's not part of the 5% that we need to complete, right?
There is a, there is a final walkthrough. So once, once all the fencing's up, we need to schedule that and anything that pops up that the engineer or the other owner, which is a federal partner, whatever they find, then said, said issues have to be addressed.
Before they make the final inspection with the city and the contract.
That's right.
Then we have to resolve all the problems, get a correct, whatever's different.
That's, that's correct. We, we call it a punch list, I don't know what the technical term is.
And we'll assure the public that, uh, you know, we're going to, we're going to keep it clean. We're going to keep it beautiful for our community. It costs a lot of money, took seven years to get here. There's still an extension to it, but at the end of the day, uh, we're going to do our part to keep that place clean because we want people to enjoy it in our community. If you haven't rode it yet, walked it yet, run it yet, please go out there and see it. It's pretty neat. Uh, we're going to do a lot more cleanup around it, but it's cool. So I will entertain a motion, um, for the extension, Resolution 20-1681, Extension of, uh, Riverwalk Trails Funding Agreement, CN Number 16100983. You make the motion? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Counselor, you're supposed to do that.
It's late.
My bad. Oh, I made the motion, right?
I, I think Counselor Eric made the motion.
I made the motion, but.
I'll second it.
1681, okay, is there a second?
I seconded.
I seconded.
Been a long night, been a long night.
May I make a comment regarding the Legacy Trail?
Yes.
Okay, it's approved.
Go ahead, Mark.
I mentioned this to Laura quite a while back. We've got that hill in front of, on First Street and people are racing down that hill. And just recently I saw three little children trying to cross. The light was blinking, but the three cars did not even begin to slow down. They did not even slow down. I don't know what we can do to encourage people to slow down in that area. If it needs another sign saying crossing ahead or something of that nature, but maybe we could even put another blinking light or something before that hill when the light goes on down where people are trying to cross. I also saw someone with, um, a cane that was trying to cross there, that had been walking there. And it takes someone that's elderly a while to cross that street. And even though the light was blinking while she was crossing the street, the cars were not letting her go. She had to wait for the cars. She was in the middle of the street and cars were still just ignoring her. So I'm concerned about the safety in that area. I would hate to see, you know, this is such a beautiful place and we've spent so much time and money and energy on the Legacy Trail. I think that we need to address, and this is my opinion, that we need to address the safety a little bit more. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. If, if I could address that, the traffic control device that was selected was approved by our federal partner as well as NMDOT. And so the, the, uh, structure itself is deemed by all traffic engineers as safe. What needs to change is that we're not aware of what that traffic control device actually means, right? And so, uh, maybe we can partner together with our, our local police, a chief is here and, and maybe educate some people that aren't stopping for that pedestrian walkway and, and maybe educate them. Chiefs, Chiefs approach it.
Maybe we could put some signs right by the hill, you know, watch for pedestrians crossing our Legacy Trail, you know, caution. There, there's the chief.
Counsel, Councilman, uh, City Manager, thank you. I've seen this problem there at that, that new crossing, at the pedestrian crossing. Coming down the hill, the people coming down the hill at 30 miles an hour are going to be down to the bottom of the hill before they can see anybody. People that are walking across can't see what's over the hill, so they're going to enter into the roadway not knowing any oncoming traffic. We had a, a crash there, high speed crash about a month ago, uh, road rage type thing and we arrested one of the drivers, but it ended right there at that crossing. And so my recommendation honestly is either do a traffic light at the top of the hill, which I know cost is going to be a lot, or divert pedestrian traffic to the top of the hill to cross and then go back down the hill and continue their merry way. And the reason I say that is that way everybody's making eye contact. Pedestrians making contact with the driver, drivers making eye contact with pedestrians because we can sit there and run traffic as police officers and we will. But the problem is, is when we're not there, we have a lot of people that use that, that zone right there to accelerate. And I would warn counsel, uh, that, uh, whether the engineers say it's safe, I would say the location there is, it's, it's, uh, begging for an accident, for a crash, uh, vehicle versus pedestrian. That's my, uh, professional opinion though. By all means, I'm not an engineer, I'm not, I'm not expert in the ways of traffic control other than, uh, what I've learned through the police academy. I stand for questions.
So the DOT has really scrutinized that project to the point that it's taken seven years. And they looked at all the ins and outs and whether or not we could have lights at various places. So, but it, it might be something we could visit with them again, especially because they're still working on the paperwork. But, um, there's been a lot of scrutiny of that project from the get-go because it's on a DOT road, First Street's DOT.
Where at are they looking as you were talking about putting a light?
He's saying at the top of First Street. So it would be up above, um, laying, laying insurance is up the top of the hill, I think the gas, the old gas company or the sports, yeah. He's thinking if we had something there and that we had the pedestrians go up the hill, cross over up there and then come back down.
That is a bad, bad crossing there.
We could put a bunch of speed humps. Everybody's, um, on Facebook's part, oh my gosh, yeah, no speed humps, right? We'll have to, we'll have to see if there's some solution. Uh, maybe even if there's more lights up at the top of the hill so that the warnings up above, you know, warning people, hey, there's something coming down here.
What's the speed limit there at this, at the, at the moment?
30 miles per hour.
30 miles per hour?
Yes, sir.
If they go down, they go down there at 50 and 60 miles an hour, I promise you, I mean, it's bad.
I see police officers over there at the Methodist Church from time to time and.
Hey, chief, see if you can help us out with some kind of ideas there, what we can do, buddy?
That's what's going.
Yeah, I got a comment. There's some, there's some signs out there now where, uh, pedestrian crossings that are lit up with neon. But that might be an option to put it up there on the hill as it coming down, you know, to, to stop with pedestrians. It's a neon sign, it's a rectangle sign and, uh, they're out there, I've seen them. So that might be an option. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, that's the Resolution 201681 concerning approval of distribution of monthly personal property by option.
So did we approve that resolution, the prior one? We did? Did we vote on it? Did we vote on it?
I think we did.
On the, on the, number fourteen?
Legacy extension, did we?
I, I, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Did we, Jean?
Everybody screwed that one up, so I, I started it, I, um...
So, yes, first...
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Sixteen eighty.
Eric Garcia first, was the first and Fred Wajerjewski was second.
Okay, I guess I was asleep. So, okay, we're on to the next one, sixteen eighty-one. The, we have several vehicles sitting around that are not usable, they're not running. So periodically, we have an auction. This is a resolution that you're approving, that we auction off those vehicles. There's a list in your packet. One list from the police department is more so equipment, um, and other items. And then some vehicles on the second sheet. Then after you approve a resolution, then it goes to the DFA for them to approve. The staff will put together a silent, um, sealed auction bids where people can put in sealed bids. And then the highest bidder gets to purchase the piece of equipment and take it. Um, so that's the process for disposing of vehicles.
Take a trader. And that is running.
Right. So all we need is your approval of Resolution Twenty Sixteen Eight One.
I got a question, I got a question, you know.
Go ahead.
And these numbers is, uh, dollars, it does particular ads to start the bill or?
I'm not sure how they'll organize it.
I, I think we, we had to attach what the proposed value should be. But that's not necessarily what will come in.
Because you've got a, a treadmill, eleven hundred and sixty-six dollars. The Segway, fifty-four hundred bucks, that was probably new, huh?
That's, that, those are the most current valuations we can find. So that's definitely not what we're going to get, no.
No, okay. Laura, where does, um, you know, when all these, all these items are sold, where does the funding go?
Um, it, it goes into the general fund, I'm not sure exactly.
Can we designate where it goes?
We could.
If you wanted to?
I believe so. Cause we've only, yeah, we've only had one auction since I've been here, and that was like five years ago. So I don't remember where that went.
Well, I'd like to see if we could start a fund for, uh, buying more, uh, equipment for the police department and some of the equipment that, uh...
They need.
That they need. And if we could begin a fund, putting, putting a fund in that, in that direction.
The scramblers we were talking about?
What are scramblers?
And updated cameras for, for police officers and stuff like that.
Steve, is that what we were talking about, scramblers, what you call, how you call it scramblers? Do you intercept, uh?
Yes, sir. Um, just, what I, I talked with, actually, all three councilmen up here at, at, uh, different times. We just, uh, we're talking about what's going on with the PD and stuff. Uh, each councilman asked like, what do you need? And I've got a great wish list, but I know that we're looking at budget cuts. So, so one of the things that we've been finding, and this, this is one thing that's really happening now, uh, a lot more recently, is people carrying their cell phones with, uh, where they can scan our police frequency. And so we've, we've come into so many contacts just in the last months where criminals are walking the streets, driving the streets, or they're at their home, and they're listening to us as we're responding to their location. And so what we're getting is we were, you know, there's, I can give you several instances where the criminal we're getting ready to apprehend or what we're watching, we're staking out for drug activity. Uh, all of a sudden, we get a shots fired call at the other end of town. And we go and there's nothing there. And so we know that they're utilizing these, uh, these scanners to, basically to foil what we're doing. So my, my thought, and we're looking at different, different ideas, is to buy that. Um, and that's what I, I'd said to each of the councilmen, like, if we had something this year that we would like to get, would be something of this nature. And we can go really expensive, I know that's not a deal. Or we can go really cheap, which would be handheld radios that we can probably get for like four hundred bucks a piece. And then outfit each officer with that. And then it'd be short distance. Anyway, my point is though, that's what we were talking about, Mr. Councilman, is the encryption, encryption type radio equipment. And I understand that it is a short year for us, for sure. Okay?
Thank you.
May I make a comment regarding that also? We have done the DWI checkpoints for the DWI program. And they're saying, because they already know where the checkpoints are going to be set up, they simply avoid them. And so they're not as useful, this tool is not as useful as it has been in the past. So when we have gone out to do the video for these, uh, events, we find that there's no one there except the people setting up the checkpoint.
Set up going to Walmart and you'll catch, that's where everybody's going, right? To Walmart. Yeah. Okay.
So we need to make a motion?
Yes. Yes.
All right, we're gonna make a motion on this?
Well, I make a motion. I make a motion that we pass Resolution, uh, Twenty Dash One Six Eight One concerning approval of disposition of obsolete personnel property by auction.
I second.
Second? Counsel Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Counsel Redarte?
Yes.
Counsel Pidiya?
Yes.
Approved. Okay. I'm needing to follow a waste agreement.
The, we're approving a solid waste agreement with the Solid Waste Authority to dispose of dead animals. Once a week, our staff take dead animals, some are found in the streets, run over various things, and they take them to the, the transfer station. So we're approving a contract or an agreement for that services. And it's the same amount that it's been for many years, three hundred dollars a month. I wanted to also note before I forget that, um, the Solid Waste Authority really assists us in many ways. When we're having a cleanup, they provide extra dumpsters, they help us with, uh, illegal tire dumping. And this past month, they've offered to, um, not charge us basically for our trash coupons for four months. That, because people are home, they're doing more cleaning. And so the trash coupon reimbursement went from four hundred dollars a month to a thousand, over a thousand. More people are cleaning their yards and their homes. So he said he would give us a break and not charge us for those for four months. So I thought that was very nice of him.
Just one question on this, Laura.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do they find a lot of dead animals?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes. Um, some are brought in, or people call too if they have an animal that died. You know, many people bury their animals, some don't. And they'll, uh, they'll call. In fact, I was on the phone with Sherry the other day, and somebody was calling and asking for them to pick up a animal that died at their home. So, yes.
And is this, um, you said somebody called from their home, so, so any citizen can call if they have dead animals? Like one of their pets passes away or?
No.
No?
They can, yes, they can. We, we don't want a lot, but yes, they can. We want you to bury your own animals in your...
Throw it over the fence. And call.
No, people can.
I choose to say that.
Well, I, I didn't know that that was, uh, a very active, uh...
Yeah.
A very active thing in the city.
Once a week, our maintenance guy takes animals, but, yeah, I don't know how many he takes each week, but he takes some.
Okay.
Yeah.
Little education there.
They take out ducks? They taking ducks from the pond?
From the pond?
They go from the pond.
Is it just within the city limits?
No, uh, we actually service the whole county.
Cause I know sometimes we're dragging down Interstate forty and you see, you know, animals that have tried to cross Interstate forty and...
Yes, they make it up.
They make it.
Right.
Okay. That's all I have, Rick.
Okay, we approve this. Do you want to make a motion to, uh, approve the three hundred dollars?
I make a motion, we approve the solid waste services agreement for three hundred dollars a month.
I'll second it.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Counsel Redarte?
Yes.
Counsel Pidiya?
Yes.
Okay, approved. Wow, that was long. All right, um, any other comments?
I just got one, Rick. Um, someone had sent me something, um, a screenshot of whoever was talking about on Facebook. But just wanna make it clear, there was a part of the show, the meeting, that I asked Counsel Redarte to, uh, put his mic on so he could make, uh, a motion, uh, to, to Counsel Lucero. I did not tell him to vote a certain way. All these guys in here have their own voice. We might not all agree, but we're trying to work as a team. But I, nowhere I asked anybody to vote for something. They have their own opinion on everything.
I have a comment as well. Uh, just, uh, the other day, uh, Eric and I happened to walk down the trail there at the Riverwalk. And, uh, we noticed some people down there where the, that little theater is, or what is it, the amphitheater? And, um, they were just concerned citizens that, that love Grants. One of them was the manager of Pizza Hut and, was there kids? And then her brother, I think, who's visiting from out of town. They were just down there cleaning, 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 picking up trash, throwing up trash. Nobody asked them to do it, they just wanted to do it. And Eric and I took the opportunity to sit there and chat with them for a little bit and commend them for, for that. And, uh, we applaud the citizens of Grants when we see, uh, good things like that taking place in our city. That was very commendable on their part. That's all I had to say.
Laura?
I do, I, it seems like in our world and in our community, there's a lot of tension and unrest and hate and people fighting with one another. Um, and I, I think it's more prevalent outside of Grants more so. But I'd just like for all of us to work together and to try to, this, you know, difficult times like this is the time we need to pull together and support each other. And as Eric said, we're not always gonna agree, but we need to pull together and we need to trust each other and, um, work out any of our differences. And I'd also like to mention, uh, the rodeo grounds, um, was given to us. The rodeo grounds was given to us by the Rodeo Association. And they have done an excellent job for probably forty-some-odd years, I don't know how many years, of managing the rodeo grounds. We have an agreement with them that they are the managers. Uh, Dawn is, it was put on their board so that we would know what's going on, we'd have a voice. But I'd like for us to be very careful about attempting to micromanage them and dictate to them what they should be doing. They're all volunteers and, boy, I'd sure hate to lose those volunteers because that's, we don't, we have a budgeted to take over the rodeo grounds. And everything that happens there is done by volunteers. And so we've got a good thing going, let's compliment them. But any places that are, just because we own them, it's same with the Main Street. The Main Street was housed in one of our buildings, the Arts Council's housed in one of our buildings. But that doesn't mean that we can dictate to them what they should be doing. We don't want to get into arguments like we've seen between the hospital and the county because they have an outside agency managing. So just, let's be real considerate of their, their work and their volunteer work.
Fred, you got anything?
Yes, uh, you know, I, all of us, not just me, but the other councilmen, we get a lot of calls from the citizens. And I, we don't all, we don't have all the answers. Like me, if you work for Laura, Jean, and Mark, and the rest of the crew here, I don't know what I'd do, cause I'd call them, you know, for answers, cause they wanna know. And they're the constituents. And I wanna thank everybody for a job well done, the police, fire department. Wanna thank everybody there, all the employees.
Yeah, I've got something, uh, you know, it's difficult over the last, you know, month or so, um, with a lot of decisions we have to make. You know, we're not always in agreement, but I think we have to respect everybody's choices and, and their decisions and even their comments. And this is a difficult time, and we're making some difficult decisions, uh, on our community. And, and it's about keeping our, our families and our friends safe. And, um, that's what I'm trying to do. And, uh, I know you guys all think about the same things, uh, along those lines as far as keeping our community safe. In saying that, uh, I just wanna thank also our, our police and, uh, and the fire department for all they do in keeping us safe as well. So, um, Laura, you've done a great job, you know, with us, and I, you have our support. And, uh, we want you to stay around for the next couple of years and help us out. And, uh, and with that, I just wanna close and say, uh, thanks to everybody. Thanks to our, our board members, councilors, uh, for all, all that you do. So, um, is there anything else? Laura?
No, thank you for your support, I appreciate it.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Everybody say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, sir.
What's your, Rick?